This meeting of the Cylon Springs Board of Adjustments to order. Roll call, please.
Song.
Here.
Montgomery. Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bernard.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and freedom. Thank you very much. Members of the board, I need, as you all are well aware of, remember we need to talk close to the mic as it is being recorded. And if we don't close, talk close to the mic, then you, when you go back to look at it, you can't understand. Okay, you've all received minutes of the regular meeting on May the ninth, twenty twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on May the ninth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any adjustments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And minutes are approved. Okay, we have variance in the first item on the agenda is Board of Adjustment twenty-three dash zero nine. Ms. Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Megan Thomas, Planner One. This is a variance request for a property located at eight fourteen South Inglewood Street. The request is to allow a single-family dwelling to encroach ten feet into the rear fifteen-foot building setback area. This is the site plan that has been provided to staff for the proposed single-family dwelling. As you can see, they are proposing a five-foot rear setback for the proposed structure and are meeting the front and side setback requirements. And that five foot is shown there in the red circle. This is a survey for the property. The hardship for the variance is related to the shallow depth of the lot caused by the right-of-way along South Inglewood Street, as depicted in this survey. The building setbacks are measured from the property boundaries and the right-of-way. As you can see from the survey, the right-of-way along South Inglewood Street cuts substantially into the lot's depth by twenty-six point five feet. That leaves a remaining depth of thirty-nine point five feet. The front and rear setback areas combined is thirty-five feet. So actually, the applicant only has a remaining depth of four point five feet to work with to build a dwelling unit within, which essentially renders the lot non-buildable. And this slide shows the neighboring property directly to the south of the site. It's eight twenty South Inglewood Street. As you can see, the neighboring house appears to be encroaching into the rear setback in the same manner that is being requested with the setback variance. Therefore, this proposal would be consistent with the built environment. And this is the aerial view of the property. You can see the lot is fairly small in size. Staff concurs that there is a legitimate hardship that exists on the property. The shallow depth of the lot caused by the right-of-way along South Inglewood Street renders the lot essentially non-buildable within the building setback parameters. A ten-foot rear setback variance would allow the applicant to construct a dwelling unit on the lot. Um, with that said, staff is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this variance request? Okay, board members, it's your turn for the questions.
Not sure who to address the question to, but, uh, did the owner of the lot realize that it was such a small lot? And it really wasn't, uh, available to be built on? Because the setbacks are all recorded and documented so that you can find out whether or not it's a buildable lot before it's purchased.
So I'll answer that. So previously, the applicant came to us with a proposal for a single-family dwelling on the lot, um, because we couldn't tell where the right-of-way along South Inglewood Street was at. Um, they had to go and get a surveyor to figure out where that right-of-way line begins at so we could determine where the setback for the front begins. Um, once they did the survey, they realized how substantial the cut was into their property. And that's when it came to light about the depth of the lot.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Okay, hearing no questions coming up, I'll entertain a motion. No one wants to make a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve rear setback variance BOA twenty-three oh nine.
I have a motion to approve, uh, variance BO, BOA twenty-three dash zero nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Next item on our agenda is lot coverage variance, uh, BOA twenty-three dash ten. There is a request to table this lot coverage variance to December the twelfth. Do I have a motion for?
Motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion to table in a second. Roll call.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
This, uh, lot coverage variance BOA twenty-three dash ten has been tabled. It will be brought back before this board on December the twelfth. Next item on the agenda is parking variance BOA twenty-three dash eleven at eight sixteen East Main Street. It has been requested to table this parking variance until December the twelfth. Do I have a motion?
Motion to table BOA twenty-three dash eleven?
I have a motion to, uh, table BOA twenty-three dash eleven. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table twenty-three eleven. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Parking variance twenty-three dash eleven will be tabled until December twelfth meeting. That concludes our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This Board of Adjustment is adjourned.
You, you do need a second for that motion.
Whoops.
Second.
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Jay. I call to order the Cylon Springs Planning Commission, uh, October the tenth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call, please.
Song.
Here.
Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bernard.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
You've all received the minutes from our meeting on September the twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and had a chance to review them. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of September twelfth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All in favor, so signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes are approved. First item on our agenda is significant development permit SD twenty-three dash seventeen at eight sixteen East Main Street. The, we do have a request to table this until the December the twelfth meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion to table significant, significant development permit SD twenty-three dash seventeen until December the twelfth. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call, please.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Significant development permit SD twenty-three dash seventeen is tabled, will be brought off the table on December the twelfth, Planning Commission meeting. Next item on our agenda is rezoned development permit, RZ twenty-three dash oh six. Uh, one thousand block of Cherry Whitlock. Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Megan Thomas, Planner One. This is a rezoning request to rezone six point eight seven acres located at the one thousand block of Cherry Whitlock from R two residential medium to R three residential two family, as well as amend the future land use designation from the property from Neighborhoods one to Neighborhoods two in order to allow for duplexes to be constructed. This is a survey of the site. This is lot four of the major code subdivision, and it is located directly to the south of the recently approved BlackBerry Estates subdivision. As previously stated, the future land use map is calling for Neighborhood one on the site as well as all the surrounding and abutting, um, land. The Neighborhoods one designation is intended to represent traditional single-family development on medium-sized lots and describes duplexes as not appropriate for this area. Staff concurs with the existing Neighborhoods one designation for the property and finds that it is not consistent, or that it is consistent with the existing and emerging single-family residential uses within the area. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use designation to Neighborhoods two to allow for the duplexes. The Neighborhoods two designation represents mixed density development that ranges from single-family residential to triplexes and fourplexes. Staff finds that the Neighborhoods two designation appears to be incompatible with the surrounding existing and emerging single-family residential uses within the neighborhood. Therefore, staff is not supportive of the future land use map amendment for this property. This is an image of the Stubbs Court duplex development, which was constructed by the same developer that is requesting this rezoning. This is just to give you guys an idea of what the applicant is proposing for this site. And this is an aerial view of the property. So you can see that the surrounding area, the surrounding built environment is primarily residential with large estate-sized lots all budding on all sides. And then you have medium-sized lots to the east. Um, the proposed R three zoning appears to be incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood context and character. Additionally, the proposed zoning could possibly be considered spot zoning as there are no other duplexes located within this general area. I think the closest duplex use is two fourths of a mile away. Um, this is the overall site view of the property. You can see the previously approved BlackBerry Estates site to the north. I went ahead and pointed that out for you. Again, those are large estate-sized lots that are about to be going in there. Um, and this whole site is surrounded by large estate-sized lots as well. Um, staff has received one phone call and two letters of opposition to this request. Um, staff also has concerns that the requested zone, um, is not the best and highest use of the property. And staff is recommending denial of the zoning request. Staff is available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Megan. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this rezoned development permit? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and your address. And I ask you to please speak into the microphone because this is being recorded.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Uh, my name is Javier Chavez. I live here in Cylon, um, thirty-one, one, six, East Genghis Street. I'm a builder, commercial and residential. And, uh, we're looking for a piece of property to do some, uh, rental property right here in, in Cylon. And we got interested in this property because it's close from Young Brown University. We believe it's, uh, a lot of need of, uh, housing there, students, teachers, and, and workers. And we consider this area a walkable distance to, to JBU. And that's the reason, because we're looking for, if it's possible, to rezone to R three. And, uh, we intend to do a nice and good construction with, uh, big green areas in front and back. And we understand very well, you know, we're surrounded for, by single family. Uh, and we're very open to listen ideas, how we can reduce the impact on neighbors. So we understand very well that and willing to do whatever is necessary to reduce the impact on the neighbors. So that's our intention there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address this? I haven't turned the timer on. Technically, we have three minutes, but, uh, keep your comments short and I won't turn the timer on.
Okay, my name is James Gerdner, nine oh two North Carl Street, and I would like for you to reject this plan. I live in the area. These are larger lots, uh, single-family dwellings, and we'd like to not have it, uh, stuck with, uh, what you saw in that picture with, with that many houses or cars and that many, uh, duplexes in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Dean Boes. I live at nine oh four North Carl. I'm a neighbor of his. And this site is known for flooding. I don't believe that it is a good building site for especially the skinny part right there. It, it's, it wouldn't be a good place to put a house because I've seen it underwater. So that's my opinion, and I reject it. I don't want that there.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to come up and address this variance? Please, uh, state your name and your address.
I, uh, John Engel, thirteen thirty Scout Trail. Um, I'm the developer of BlackBerry Estates. I also do not want to see duplexes right next to my new development. That was really all I had. Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address this? Hearing no one else from the audience, commissioners, uh, your turn.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I just want to make a statement. The thought that goes into the process of deciding the zoning and the zoning map is not something that's made simple. Um, I know the committee that was on the twenty forty plan and the hours and hours and hours and hours of thought that went into that and where, what kind of housing goes and what kind of structures go and everything like that. So it wasn't made with just flippant thought processes. So this, this, I believe personally needs to remain zoned the way it is, and I would be, not be for this.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree that when we look at our twenty forty comprehensive plan, that this does not fit in with that particular neighborhood. Although I do value the idea that we do need more areas where we can have affordable housing and rentals for people, and everyone can't live on a larger place. But when we went through the process to look at this and set up the comprehensive plan, we looked at where it was appropriate to blend those things, to blend those types of buildings. And this has nothing to do, I'm, I'm not educated on whether or not it floods, but I would assume that the builder would bring in dirt if that was the case to level up the land. I think the issue before us is really, do we want to allow the duplex builds in this area that's R two residential?
Thank you, Katie. Any, any other, anyone else want to make comments?
I don't really have anything to add. I mean, I think I would agree with the consistency of the neighborhood and what's being developed there. Um, you know, I know Javier, I think he built a good home. Um, I just think the mix in terms of what's happening there, it's, it, it's just, it doesn't go, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Chavez, I appreciate that you want to build homes here and that you want to build affordable housing for college students that's walkable. I think that's something that we need. But I agree with, with the rest of the commission. You know, I, I just don't think that fits in that neighborhood. And a concern that I have is, you know, Cherry Whitlock, early in the morning, there is terrible traffic. It is already, you know, Cherry Whitlock in Mount Olive is one of the worst spots in town, early in the morning and later in the afternoon. And I have a real concern about putting multifamily housing just down the street from that because I think those people are going to be working-class people that are trying to go to work. And we already have major traffic problems in that area. And that's also a, a concern that I have.
Thank you, Sally. Ted, you got anything?
I just appreciate, um, Mr. Chavez, um, but I agree with other commissioners.
Okay, with those comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to deny RZ twenty-three zero six rezoned development permit.
I have a motion to deny RZ twenty-three zero six. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Rezoned permit, RZ twenty-three oh six is, uh, denied. It will go to the Board of Directors on November the seventh. Before we go on to the next item. Okay, next item on the agenda is RZ twenty-three zero seven. Uh, Mr. Rhodes, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. So, uh, we have another rezoning request. There's actually quite a few on the, on the agenda today, as you'll see. Uh, but this one is, uh, different part of town. We're at the twenty-two hundred block of South Lincoln Street. Um, this is just to the north of South Point. If you guys know where South Point comes off of Lincoln. Uh, it is a city-owned property, twenty point five one acres, uh, currently zone GI, um, with a request to go to, uh, I one industrial. Uh, here we see the, uh, property that's provided as, um, an, um, lot consolidation that was done in twenty seventeen when the city acquired the, the property. Uh, that time, um, it was supposed to be a potential site for the rodeo grounds relocation, but that never really worked out, um, due to costs and, and other different difficulties with that becoming a reality. So the, uh, city has retained the property, uh, and we're desiring to, um, use it for, uh, a little bit more, uh, industrial-type use, which I'll explain in a second here. But we have, um, here we have the, uh, future land use map. So, uh, being a city-owned property, uh, they designated with that blue, which is the, um, special land use, uh, requirement. And those are really just, uh, zones where you're, where they don't fit squarely in, in, any of the other categories, typically for like public use facilities, like, uh, wastewater treatment plant, um, and things of that nature. Um, so according to the letter of intent, the site will be used for, um, the electric department and public works, for warehousing of equipment, which will improve, uh, gravel lay-down yard and other future services, such as potentially a new animal shelter or something like that that would fit on the property. Uh, here you see the, uh, site location, uh, looking north. Um, we did receive one call of a questioning nature from the, uh, neighbor. Uh, that's not in the staff report because we've just received that, uh, after the reports went out. Um, but they, uh, I don't believe they were in opposition. They were just more just wondering what was, what was going on. Uh, and with that, we are recommending approval with no needed conditions, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Rezoned permit. Commissioners, do you have questions? Well, if commissioners don't have questions, I do. Ben, will this, will the facility located on off of Holly Street, like the electrical place off of Holly Street, will they be moving over there? Or will they continue to keep that, uh, Holly Street location?
I, I believe their intent is to keep the Holly Street location. This will be, uh, additional, like auxiliary use.
Okay.
Um, as they, as they expand, they need more storage areas.
Okay, understood. Okay, hearing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve RZ twenty-three dash oh seven.
I have a motion to approve rezoning development permit, RZ twenty-three oh seven. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve RZ twenty-three oh seven. Roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Motion is approved. This will be going to the Board of, Board on November the seventh, twenty twenty-three. Next item on our agenda is rezoned development permit, RZ twenty-three oh eight. Uh, Ms. Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Megan Thomas, Planner One. This is a rezoning request to rezone eighteen point eight eight acres from A one agriculture to C two roadway commercial. The property is located at thirty-eight sixty-one Highway four twelve east, directly to the east of the urgent care clinic. This is the survey for the property. It is currently a non-platted property. The future land use map is calling for regional commercial on this site. Therefore, the proposed C two zoning is consistent with the future land use designation for the property. And this is the overall site view of it. You can see the urgent care clinic over here in the southwest corner of the site. The property is currently vacant, is primarily surrounded by commercial and industrial uses. The site is also directly accessible from Highway four twelve, making it a prime location for commercial development. As stated in the applicant's letter of intent, this rezoning request was triggered by the applicant's desire to construct a commercial, retail, and restaurant significant development on this site. Staff is recommending approval of this request with no needed conditions, and staff is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address this, uh, rezoned development permit, RZ twenty-three oh eight? Please come forward, state your name and address, and please speak into the mic.
My name is Steve Harriman. I'm an officer with the Burke Collins Company based in Hurst, Texas. Uh, I'm also here as a representative of Cylent Crossing, Cylum Crossing LLC, the agent for the Reagan Revocable Trust, the owner of the property. Uh, I'm here to present the fact that we'd like to have this property rezoned from an agricultural state and, uh, into C two, which would allow, uh, both sit-down and, uh, QSR restaurants, uh, as well as small retailers, um, uh, plant pads up front, uh, one to one and a half acre pads. And then, uh, for future, uh, development in the rear of the property for major retail, uh, stores of, uh, what we call, um, uh, junior anchors of sorts, twenty to twenty-five, thirty thousand square foot stores. Um, we realize that, uh, we're taking the city a little bit further east again from some of the concentration, um, but that we know also that this matches real well with the, uh, comprehensive land use plan. Uh, it fits very well into the envelope. With that, I'd ask if you approve it this evening, and if you have any other questions, um, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Do you need an address?
I'm sorry, uh, the address is, uh, five hundred Grapevine Highway, Suite two twenty-four, Hurst, Texas, seven six zero five four.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address this, uh, rezoned development permit? Hearing done, commissioners? The pa, the packet that we all received was very, very thorough, and we appreciate that. And hearing no comments from the commissioners, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the rezoned development permit, RZ twenty-three dash oh eight.
I have a motion to approve RZ twenty-three oh eight. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve RZ twenty-three Have a motion and a second to approve RZ twenty-three oh eight. Roll call please.
McKinney.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Motion is approved. This will go to the board on November the seventh, twenty twenty-three. Next item on our agenda is rezon, uh, rezon development permit RZ twenty-three oh nine. Uh, you're up again, Megan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Megan Thomas, Planner One, again. This is a rezoning request to rezone point eight six acres from R-two residential medium to C-two roadway commercial. The property is located at the five hundred block of South Britt Street. This is the concept plan that has been provided for the future development proposal. The C-two zoning was selected based on the size of the proposed commercial structure, which qualifies as a large impact commercial, greater than five thousand square feet, and is not permitted within a C-one zoning district, hence the C-two zoning request. It should be noted that the portion of the development shown here to the east, and that's over here, is currently zoned C-two and I-one, and therefore that does not require rezoning, and that's why they're only focused on this west portion right here that's in red. You can see from the concept plan that the applicant intends to leave a buffer of residential zoning where their detention pond will be located at in order to allow distance between the proposed commercial use and the existing residential uses to the west. That's this area here, so that's currently zoned R-two and R-three. They did not include that on purpose because they want to keep that little buffer there where their detention's going to be. The future land use map is calling for neighborhoods too. Staff is not necessarily supportive of this designation as the site abuts existing and emerging commercial and industrial uses and is in close proximity to the rail line, which typically is reserved for commercial and industrial uses. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use designation to office and flex space to allow for their proposed commercial use. Staff is in support of this designation for the property as this area serves as a transitional area between more intensive commercial and industrial development and historical residential uses. Additionally, the office and flex space designation is more in line with the existing and emerging commercial and industrial to the north and east that are abutting. Also, residential uses on this site may not be considered the best and highest use of the property considering it is directly abutting those uses and where it's located at. This is the overall site view of the property. You can see the existing commercial to the north of this site. This area shown here to the east again is the I-one and the C-two lots that are part of this development proposal. This area shown, wait, the area shown here to the west is the residential lots that they are keeping residential for their detention pond to keep that buffer between them and these existing residentials over here to the west. Um, and this is the only other residential lot that is currently abutting the site. It is currently vacant. Taking into consideration the site's location in relation to the existing and emerging commercial and industrial uses in the neighborhood, staff finds that the requested C-two zoning is compatible with the existing and planned uses within this area. Additionally, staff feels that a commercial zone, zoning district serves well as a transition between the more intensive industrial uses to the east and the residential uses to the west, therefore staff recommends approval of this request with the future land use map amendment and no needed conditions. Oh, and before I forget, staff has received two phone calls and one email of questioning nature on this project. Staff is available for any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Megan. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this RZ twenty-three oh nine? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and please talk directly into the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Chris Bakounis, and I'm with McClellan Consulting Engineers, representing the, the property owner, fifteen eighty East Sterns, Fayetteville. Uh, the only thing I think I'll add to Megan's report is that I've been working with staff for probably the better half of a year or more trying to figure out the best use for this property. As Megan pointed out, the same property owner owns the, the property on the east side of Britt, which is zone industrial, and we're just trying to figure out what the best transition back into that residential side is. So, we've explored everything from multifamily housing to different, um, commercial zoning. So we've landed on C-two, which we think is the most appropriate, and I feel good about it, and I, I hope you guys see that as well. So, that said, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience who would like to address this? Please state your name and your address for the record and talk into the microphone, please.
Rob Apple, six one five East Granite Street. I'm the property immediately south with the circle on it there. Um, so I want to be clear first, um, uh, I was, I think I was the email of, uh, questioning nature. I, I'm not at all opposed. I'm not trying to oppose this. I am asking for more consideration. Uh, I did speak with Chris earlier, and I do appreciate, uh, the effort that's going in. Uh, I do believe this part of town needs development. It's a gritty part of town, and I am excited that people are taking interest in it, and I hope to do the same at some point. That being said, my concerns were more about the C-two zoning and the allowable uses and the intent to get, um, allowable use for industrial down the road, which signals intent for that site, uh, the types of tenants that would come into that place. Um, if you look down Jefferson, currently there's a grocery store, there's restaurants, two salons, and other small businesses, which traditionally fall into C-one. Uh, they serve the neighborhood, uh, they improve quality of life. Um, the services, um, are important for neighborhoods, specifically as redevelopment happens, as our population grows and density becomes more important versus sprawl. And so I'm hoping that there is, uh, a way to go back to C-one and to consider, uh, how C-one could work to inspire future C-one development, to improve, you know, everything west of Britt Street to be, um, beneficial to neighborhoods. Uh, right now, um, the allowable uses in C-two are my only concern, and if there was, uh, option to table and come back and look at C-one again, and even how other neighbors that have, uh, property adjacent can participate in that to help make that happen, I think that would be, uh, my preference. But that said, this is not a request to oppose. It is more of a, do we, do we think about the larger context of that neighborhood and the future use? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address this issue? With that being said, commissioners, it's your turn.
Well, I'd just like to say that I'm smack dab in the middle of the restaurants and the beauty shops. I live in a residence that backs up to East Jefferson, and it truly is more of a small business area. When I look at it, I wish in a way that we had kept all that residential along there because the traffic there now is quite significant, but Britt is a little different, and where that is is a little different, and I would like to see that developed. But I wouldn't like to see it ever leased out, say, as mentioned here in the context of C-two, where it could have hazardous materials there. We are close to the railroad tracks, and if you're close to the railroad tracks, there's a chance there might be a tipping or something might be spilled, but it isn't sitting there all the time. Would, uh, the gentleman like to discuss why C-two is better than C-one for this area when the rest of it is more to C-one guidelines?
The major drawback that we saw with C-two versus C-one was C-one does not allow parking on-site. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that was the major drawback.
Chris, can you?
You know he can't.
Pull up on that mic.
Sorry. Do you need me to start over? All right. The, the major drawback between the C-two and C-one that we saw was C-one does not allow parking on-site. Um, which, it looked like the C-one was maybe more geared towards more of a, a walkable area, maybe more urban. Um, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but I think that was the main objective or the main, um...
My mic's not working. Oh, there we go. C-one does allow parking with your development. It, it doesn't allow the parking, the RV park and the commercial parking lot is what it, it wasn't permitted.
Gotcha.
Just that by standalone.
Okay.
But with the development itself. But the reason that y'all were doing C-two is because you're going ten thousand five hundred square feet on the building, which is a large impact. Um, C-one only permits small scale, which is fi- five thousand or less. Anything above five thousand is not permitted in C-one. So C-one was intended for smaller development that doesn't require significant development, which this is requiring significant development.
So, so maybe we just got through the parking lot hurdle then.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess it comes down then next to the building size. And what his intended use is, is these will be, so the building that we're proposing on this site, I don't remember how many square feet off the top of my head, but it would have two sides to it, and then, so you'd have two businesses in there. So it's, it's, I, I don't know if I want to call it small scale, but there are, there will be multiple tenants in there using that building. It's just a larger building than what C-one would allow. And as far as I know, you had mentioned hazardous materials. I don't know that that's out of the question to, to not allow hazardous materials just for that portion, that, that C-two portion. I think that's on the table. If that's something we need to discuss.
Well, and I don't think, uh, because it's designated C-two doesn't mean that you're going to build fireworks there or anything, you know? But if you do, I won't be hap- no. Uh, but I do think we need to be thoughtful when we're integrating in an old historic part of town and bringing in industry and considering potential. You may sell the building to someone else who may decide to do something there. So we need to be thinking, uh, that not just us, but whoever lives after we've long gone in that area is safe. So maybe some kind of a restriction about usage would make it feel better to me.
Because really what this gentleman, the owner, is after is, this is, there, there's a needed space right now for contractors. And so I've keep using the, the example of a plumbing contractor. So this might be a plumbing contractor that keeps his truck there and has an office there and some equipment inside a garage. So that's, that's kind of the end goal of what we're after with this, this project.
There'd be smaller buildings within your large building, these smaller spaces.
Yes, ma'am.
That would probably prohibit that kind of use.
Yeah, and so that was, that was the, the hang up with C-one is the, the overall building size, even though it's broke up into bays.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any other questions of, from the commissioners?
Megan, I'm, I'm curious. You said you received two phone calls and one email. Were the phone calls in opposition or?
No, phone calls were in opposition. The email was not in opposition. They were all questioning nature as to what the use is that's being proposed. Um, a lot of the questions that I received seemed to be focused around the special use request, which will be presented to y'all next month and is a separate approval. Um, right now, we're just focused on the C-two zoning.
Okay. Any other questions on the, uh, rezon for, uh, RZ twenty-three oh nine?
Would we typically look at the special use in a different meeting than the rezon?
So the special use typically comes with the significant development, which will be coming through next month, um, as well. It was supposed to come through this month's review cycle, but, um, due to issues, it got delayed, so it's been tabled a month, uh, along with special uses. Um, so that's what happened there, but it would typically come through with the signi- the, the special use.
Just feels like it would answer some of the questions if all this was done at once, I think, and ease some concern here.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on RZ twenty-three oh nine.
Chairman, I move to, uh, make a motion to rezon, approve rezon development permit RZ twenty-three dash oh nine. Hopefully with the restriction added that no hazardous materials can be on that site.
I'm going to let our community development director speak.
You have a community development director?
Hi, my name's Chris. I'm the new community development director. And, uh, I'll, I'll re- I'll refer this back to Jay, but I believe on a straight rezon, you can't have a condition of approval.
Then I'll take that. I'll rescind that recommendation.
Yeah, Chris is correct.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you, Chris. I have a motion.
Oh, second.
To approve RZ twenty-three oh nine with a second. Roll call please.
Bernard.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Rezone twenty-three oh nine is approved. This will go to the board on November the seventh, twenty twenty-three. Next item on our agenda is code amendments. Uh, Mr. Rhodes.
Yes, uh, thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Uh, so we're switching gears right now, uh, to present to you, uh, another code update. Um, there'll be, uh, more of these coming to you next month. We're kind of doing a lot of, uh, housekeeping right now behind the scenes and sort of updating some codes and things like that, so we want to present this idea to you and see if this is a good idea. Um, so as you guys recall, we had the town hall meeting that was on August the twenty-fourth. I believe some of you were able to come to that meeting. And, uh, the purpose was that, is to just kind of display our, um, review process to the general public, particularly to, uh, uh, contractors and, and surveyors and people that go through our process on a routine basis. And we did receive some feedback from them, um, about shortening the review process. Uh, it does take some time. And so, um, what, what the effort is of this code is to, uh, raise the threshold to some extent as to what type of projects are required to go to planning commission versus a staff level approvals. That's basically the impetus of what this code, uh, update is, is about. Um, so, uh, looking at the code on your screen, um, I think you are familiar with this format, but just in case you're not, the, uh, deleted text is what's, has the strike through, and then anything proposed has the underline, and, and just to make it easier to read, that's what's highlighted on the screen in the yellow. Uh, so, um, we're classifying plats, uh, to create no more than four, or four or more additional lots. Uh, and then we've, uh, are updating, um, or providing a, uh, new, um, permit that doesn't exist today called minor subdivisions, which would be a step below the final plat. That would be the two to three additional lots. And then the lot split being one additional, um, and how, how we're looking at that. Now, that's not counting the lot that you start out with. It's what you, so be, one additional means you're going to have two lots as the final product and so on and so forth as you work your way up. That, the, the word additional is very important in this code. Uh, so, um, on this slide, uh, you can see what we changed, uh, the description or refer back to the definitions, uh, in the code for lot split. And also changed the, uh, timeline for these, uh, splits. So what we've found is, um, we have a, a limit, and if you didn't know this, uh, the, of one year. So once you do a lot split, you can't come back and split it again until a year has passed. Uh, and that's measured by the date that, the, the plat is filed, uh, at the county. And so, um, what we've found is people will successively split properties on a yearly basis, almost like an annual lot split, in an effort to try to get around having to do the subdivision, uh, process. So what we've done is changed it to say that there's no more than splits, no more than three times within a five-year period. So you can split, uh, once a month if you'd like, but then you can't do anything for another five years. So, uh, that's, that's how that, what that code is doing there. So, uh, moving on to, uh, some things about the notice. Um, we, we're trying to take an approach, um, of stair stepping the notice uh, to be proportional to the actual impact of the projects themselves. So for lot line adjustments, lot consolidations, we do not require notice, and that's, that's how it is today because they're considered very minor. We don't need to send a letter to a neighbor that the lot line is changing, um, especially if the neighbors are the ones causing that to happen to begin with. Uh, then when you go up to a lot split, what we're changing that to only those abutting the property. So the, then exact next, next door neighbors, not everyone from three hundred feet, but just those that are immediately impacted by a lot split. Then for the minor, um, subdivisions, we would require a notice sign to be put up, and then letters within three hundred feet. And again, those are the ones that create the two to three lots. And then finally, the, the lot, the, uh, final plats would be the full notice, all three forms, uh, letters within three hundred feet, notice sign, and also a note, a notice in the local newspaper of the final plat. So, uh, we've also suggesting, uh, changing the timeframe. So we've also suggesting changing the timeframe from ten to fifteen days, and that's just in an effort to provide a little more flexibility to the applicant so they're not immediately rushed to try to get these letters out as soon as they, they come in. This is just, it's a lot of words there. It's really nothing new. It's essentially just mirroring the standards we already have in place for the lot splits, but then applying that to the minor subdivisions because this is a brand-new permit that we don't have. So we have to create all the standards for it. So essentially, that's what you're doing. Again, the key point is creating no more, no less than two and no more than three. So it's a very specific type of permit that, what we're looking at. And then lastly, on this final slide, just again, a bit more covering on the notice that's required, which I've already talked about, and then also changing the expiration from forty-five to sixty days. And that's just because sometimes there's owners that live out of state, even out of country sometimes, and you have to mail these things out, and then they come back, and then you have to get them organized. And so sometimes that forty-five days, even though it seems like it's a long time, we have run up in some situations where you even need more time than that. So we're saying sixty days. So after it's approved, they have to file within sixty days or expire. And I believe that is all we have on this code update, but I'm happy to answer any questions. So thank you.
Commissioners, you got any questions on the code amendments?
Just curious, how much time you anticipate this saving on those two to three lot?
A lot, because we're, we're suggesting these to be administrative approvals, just like lot splits. So the lot splits take, well, they usually take about five weeks. We've done something internally, which we can shorten that time now, I think, to around three weeks or so, hopefully. I'm getting a nod, yes. So this would be lumped in with that. So three weeks versus about three months. The final plat, as you know, has to go back to planning commission, and then it has to go to the board of directors, and then has also go through the whole technical review. So you're, you're talking substantial time savings with the, with the code update.
Great. I really appreciate you guys prioritizing that. I think if there's one area of feedback that I get as a planning member, that's probably just the, the timeline to get something done. So thank you.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Ben, do you need our approval on this?
Yes, sir. We do need an up or down vote, just like any other of the items. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions on the code amendment? I'll entertain a motion to approve the code amendment. Can we do this on a voice vote, or do we need a roll call, Jay?
Needs to be a roll call.
Thank you. I'll need a, I'll entertain a motion to approve the changes to Chapter four land use codes, lot split reviews.
Make a motion to approve the changes to Chapter fifty-four land use code, lot split reviews?
I have a motion to approve the land use code, Chapter fifty-four, in reference to the lot split reviews. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the code amendment changes to Chapter fifty-four. Roll call, please.
McKinney?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Motion is approved. This will go to the board of directors on November the seventh, twenty twenty-three. Next item on the agenda is board and staff approve permits, which you each received a copy of. Are there any questions concerning those permits? Hearing no questions, is there any concern? We're all aware that we've got a meeting in December. Is there any concerns about that December meeting? That took care of that. I'll entertain a, all right, Ben.
You thought you were done, right? A few little quick announcements. Of course, the December meeting, hopefully everyone's fine with that. We did get approval for that actual meeting. It really does help the developers and everyone to get that. So we appreciate you meeting in December. The, reminder of the vacancies on the planning commission. This is more for anyone listening. They are, I believe, two seats or three seats. I don't recall, but there are several seats available.
There's three seats.
Three seats available for the planning commission starting in twenty twenty-four. So if you're interested, please get your application in, and we will consider that with, with the other applications. And then without any further ado, I would like to formally introduce our new community development director, Mr. Chris Paxton. He comes here from Conway, Arkansas. So Chris, do you want to come up and say a few words?
Absolutely. I just want to introduce myself, take any questions that you have. My name's Chris Paxton. I come from Conway, yes, but before that, I was working at the City of Rogers. I was with development compliance and zoning compliance. Before that, I did work with the City of Springdale and the City of Van Buren before that. So if you have any questions for me, you can either ask them now, or if you want to send me an email, or if you have any questions about any projects that we have coming up, then I'm happy to send you to the right planner. So just let me know, and I'm always in my office. And if I'm not, then we can definitely get an email back to you as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Chris. It's good to see you smiling face. I have one question.
I almost got away. Yes, sir.
It's a question that, because of my background, I always ask everybody I meet. Are you a veteran?
I am.
I'll talk to you later.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are adjourned.
You didn't need a second for that motion.
Exactly.
I got the second.